Good evening and welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Tuesday, April 16th. I think we all are struggling with our own impressions and recollections and images that we saw of yesterday, and I would like to say that we collectively and I personally am very grateful to all of those who participated in the Boston Marathon, runners, volunteers, medical and public safety personnel, everyone who did whatever they could to be helpful wherever they were at the time of the explosion at the finish line. The historic spirit of Patriots' Day and the marathon, which includes training, discipline, and resilience, carried everyone through the horror and the chaos caused by bombs that were clearly designed to cause maximum injuries to innocent people. We all grieve for the victims and their families. And I guess on a more positive note, I'm pleased that Team Brookline runners and all the Boston-based runners came home safely, and we do believe that no Brookline resident was injured. But this evening, we do have with us our fire chief and our police chief and our director of public health, all of whom were on the street during the marathon yesterday. And perhaps Chief O'Leary, if you would like to lead off, just give us your update.
Sure.
I know you had a lot of action.
Yes, unfortunately, a lot more than we anticipated. But thanks for asking us to come by here tonight, because I think what I'd like to tell is a little bit of a story about how yesterday unfolded. And unfortunately, we all had to deal with a very tragic set of events that were put in place by a person that was a coward and was unstable and just doesn't like our way of life, apparently. And some people paid with their lives, which is extremely sad to see, and our condolences go out to their families. But I want to talk today about what happened and use the term "we." And when I use the term "we," it's not just the police department, police department, fire department, DPW, fallen ambulance, the residents and visitors that came to our town, the businesses, and I can talk a little bit about them, and the mass emergency management unit that's here to help us out. The day started out as a typical marathon day. We all met up, well, first of all, leading up to that, we all have our plans, we've all gone through our tabletops, we've all met with the area departments, we've all met internally, and we have a plan in place, and we put it to work. During the beginning part of the marathon, we met up, we talked, Mr. Kleckner was on the route with us, we all discussed about how we were ready for the day. Mima brought down a command post that we set up on the median strip at Beacon and Marion Street, and that allowed us to have camera, view our cameras that we had set up throughout the route. It allowed us to hear radio channels of all the area police departments and fire departments and emergency personnel, and we were in contact with it, and we had a sergeant assigned to the bunker up in Framingham. All those things in place, the day went along very well until probably about 10 minutes of 3:00, when we all got the news of the bombing that had occurred down by the potential center on Boylston Street at the finish line. Once that came, our outlook on the whole event changed, and the "we" really came to the fore at that point. There was a lot of work to get done up front, there was a lot of work that we had to do, we had to manage a lot of people. Not only did we have the thousands and thousands of people on the route watching the marathon, but the Red Sox game was breaking. Boston Police did not want the people to head in towards the bombing bomb zone. They directed the crowd out to us, they gave us information that they were going to come our way. At the same time, we got information from Boston Police that one of those bombs was placed into a barrel. And what did we look for on the sidewalk at Brookline? The barrels. So we made a quick decision early on to move as many people off the roadway as we could. We put our offices, our fire personnel, fallen ambulance people, the DPW helped us move the crowds off the sidewalks. When the people came from the Red Sox game, we directed them down St. Mary's Street, over to the adjoining streets, just to get them out of the business districts, away from those barrels. Fortunately, nothing took place, but the good part about it was that we had great cooperation from the people that we asked to move along. We explained to them, most of them through the use of social media and the news channels, knew what we were doing and why we were doing it, then they saw that the runners were getting fewer and fewer because they were being stopped up in Newton, they were being stopped down around Park Drive, they weren't allowed to go to the finish line, things like that. So when we asked them to move, they did so. A step further, some of the businesses, especially up in Washington Square with, I'm going to miss some of them, but Jimmy's, Golden Temple, Washington Square Tavern, they all had crowds in them. We asked them, one of them, there's a sidewalk band, we asked them to stop playing, they did. We told them we were moving all the people away because of our concern of maybe another device in one of the barrels. They asked what they could do, we asked them that they should consider shutting down, they all did. Probably within an hour, all those bars and restaurants along the area in Washington Square were shut down, and that's every restaurant up there. And I think they didn't have to do that, I think they did it, and they did it at our suggestion, and it worked out, I thought, best for everyone because it got people out of the area. As the day progressed, we got more information out of Boston. We were in contact with Boston Police, one of our captains, Captain Murphy, went down to the Unified Command Center at Boston Headquarters. They asked for our response team, our special response team. We put together a team of 14 officers under the command of Captain Murphy, and he had supervised with Lieutenant Lipson and Sergeant Tom Ward, and they got the squads together, they met at Boston Headquarters, and they got assigned, and they're still carrying out assignments in the city of Boston right now, at the hospitals down in the medical center right over here, they had children's, BI Deaconess, and the Brigham and Women's Hospital. They're probably going to be there throughout the day tomorrow. But beyond that, we worked well with Boston Police, but particularly well with our own fellow town coworkers. And that, I have to tell you, we asked for help to move the people along, we asked that they spread the word, all the people that were on the route did that for us, there was no questions asked, everybody had a job to do. In fact, when the roads were closed down, we asked the fire department to help us with the barricades, we kept moving the barricades to let the doctors through, and we're getting called down to the hospitals, they willingly did so. And then, when it was all said and done, when we had, everything seemed to be as much under control, the crowds were gone, then we were kind of in a mode to try to help people out a little bit more. We activated a shelter at the police station, we had the public safety building we had open for people to come in and make phone calls, Oh Habbi Shalom opened up. We had about 100 and something, a little bit more than 120 runners, probably like that, that had gotten that far. We got them into the temple, they were allowed to use landlines in there to contact their family members. The state, or the marathon sent up buses, we had Beacon Street closed down, we had buses going up the wrong way to meet at a Habbi Shalom to pick up the medical personnel that were there and the runners, and bring the runners back down to the Castle Hotel down in Park Square. They did that, but prior to that happening, there were three businesses in Brookline that I want to just mention, Catering by Andrew, Whole Foods Market, and the Buddhist Sea Asian Bistro, all donated food that came down to the shelter. Just a little unfortunate, all that food arrived just as the buses loaded up, so we took the food down to the Castle Hotel where they were staged, and they met down there, and I'm sure that they benefited from the food down there. But it was a really good gesture by those three businesses in Brookline. So as the evening progressed, about 7:30, we made a decision to open up the road. Back up around 6 o'clock, we opened up the cross streets, there was traffic, it was just backing up. We had already had people assigned over onto Route 9 that were pulling the traffic out as much as they could, we were running lights, there happened to be an accident up on Route 9 by the mall, which took down one lane, which caused more of a backup, but we got through it. We opened the cross streets at about 7:30, and we opened up Beacon Street, Cleveland Circle got open, and Newton opened up their road, Carmelworth Ave., and the traffic started to flow down. Just before that, we asked the DPW to do what they did each time, they got out on the roadway, and they cleaned up as much as they could. Like I said before, we were concerned about the barrels, but that was a concern that we had brought on ourselves. We had no reports of anything going on with our trash barrels on the street. It was a step that we took, just because in the beginning, when all kind of breaks loose, you've just got to go with what you know and what you had handed with and figure out at the time. But by that time, we had no specific concern about the barrels in Brookline. We could not get a bomb unit down till sometime late today, early tomorrow. Boston kept telling us, Boston Police kept telling us, that they felt that everything was isolated to the finish line only, and that they had taken care of as much quick crime scene and bomb detection stuff that they could do at the time. So we asked the DPW to go ahead and continue to clean. Boston came out cleaning their part of the street, Beacon Street did get cleaned before we opened it. And I just think that there was a lot of work that was done by a lot of different people, and Brookline should be proud of the people that were out there that day. I know from each department that was there, they did more than what they normally do. It wasn't the optimum circumstances that you dealt with, but you dealt with the circumstances, you've got to deal with them. Everybody was professional, and I was proud to be on that Beacon Street with them and see how they did. So every department that I mentioned, even fallen ambulance, DPW, the fire department, the police department, the health department, I would constantly contact with Mr. Kleckner. And I think that we unfortunately had to handle it, but what we handled, we did pretty good. So I can turn it over right now to Fire Chief Ford, if he wants to say a couple words.
Please.
I just have one question, and I want to thank you, Chief, for all that your department did. But so on the bomb detecting equipment, we don't have any of that in town, and that's something you have to get from Boston or elsewhere?
We don't have a bomb unit. When we do have an incident with bomb, we will call Boston. They have them readily available, and they've come out and responded each time. We, Boston's right next door.
Yeah, I think that just, I'm thinking about, we're all going to be thinking about next year and how to make the whole route, including our portion of it, which is pretty densely populated with observers, safe.
Yeah, my take on it, when I walked the route, is that it was probably one of the most well-attended marathons. I know that there were getting more and more people, but yesterday, it just seemed, when I started walking, it seemed to be a lot of people throughout, which is a good thing. And I hope it doesn't change.
Chief Ford.
Good evening. Chief O'Leary's report was very comprehensive, and there's not much I can add to that report. I can say, as far as the organizations working together at different departments, I found that in my time here, they work very well together, and it's nice to see. Emergency service providers in situations like yesterday, we always pull together, and everything gets picked up a notch. We had a plan going forward, as the chief alluded to, for the marathon in and of itself. It splits the town in half, we have to divide our fire protection up, we're under pretty strict rules that we're not crossing that race. So we already had extra manpower and an apparatus, so we could be evenly split on both sides. So that helped us in the situation, the way it turned out. We were also able to hold on to that manpower, we held on to about 8 o'clock at night. To be in a position, if Boston had anything else happen, and they needed more of their own fire resources, we were able to augment theirs. So we kept our staff up till about 8 o'clock at night, and by then, everything was pretty much winding down. It is a testament to the town, and the towns make up what those businesses did in providing food. I also heard stories of tenants coming out of their homes and bringing runners in and getting them some clothing and using phones and whatnot, social media to get to their families. So all that just shows the community and the community spirit, a very unfortunate thing that we're just not used to in this country, unfortunately. I think we're going to have to be.
Questions for Chief Ford?
No.
No, okay.
But Dr. Ballsom.
Dr. Ballsom.
So the Brookline Medical Reserve Corps had a number of volunteers along the marathon route, and several staffing the medical tent at Copley Square. By now, I think everyone has heard of the outstanding work of the first responders, and this certainly includes those staffing the medical tent. Lives were saved by their courage and their hard work, and we now know that no Medical Reserve Corps or CERT volunteers were injured. We did send out a call for MRC and CERT volunteers to staff the site at Oh Habbi Shalom, a number rushed to the scene to help. Currently, we're organizing mental health support for any of our volunteers who may have been traumatized by yesterday's events. We will be working with the Brookline Community Mental Health Center on this and on other behavioral health support. In addition, the town's Employee Assistance Program, the Wellness Corporation, has also offered their services. We're doing specific outreach today, tomorrow, to Brookline veterans who may have been affected by yesterday's events. We know that veterans and others with PTSD can have symptoms stimulated in these situations. We've received calls regarding blood donations. Our latest information is that people are asked to wait till next week in order to donate. Supplies are adequate for right now, and resources are taxed currently, and blood donations will be gratefully accepted starting next week. In conclusion, yesterday was a day of horror, one that will be etched in all of our minds, but especially for those who witnessed the events. We're the first or early responders, and of course, hospital and other medical staff. There are countless stories of heroism and generosity, too numerous to begin to recount here, and the role of Brookline's public safety, public health, public works, and others is a story that should be told. It's with a mixture of outrage and sadness, along with great pride in our fellow residents, that I end this report. Thank you.
Questions for Dr. Ballsom before he goes? Yes, all of a sudden.
Not a question, but comments.
All right, well, let's see if there's a question first.
No, no.
Nope, okay, thank you, Dr. Ballsom. Comments then, Selectman Goldstein.
Thank you. Well, I just want to say, first, how sad I am, along with, I know, all of you, about what happened yesterday, about the loss of life, about the injuries, and about the taint that we will have on our beloved Boston Marathon for years to come. And it's always such a joyous day for Brookline and for the community surrounding, for all the participants, for everybody who watches, and I think that we're all diminished by the events of yesterday. Not to say that we won't be back and rebuild for what was lost yesterday. I also want to say thank you to our police, fire, health department, DPW, for their leadership and cool heads in getting at least everybody in Brookline out of the situation safely. And I also want to say, before we leave it, that I feel like the success of our Team Brookline program should not be overlooked or overshadowed by the event. I went to the Carbo Load event for Team Brookline Kickoff last Friday night. I want to recognize that over $125,000 was raised through this effort, all for the benefit of our very worthy Brookline charities, and I hope that we will do even more in the Team Brookline regard next year. So I'm looking forward to that, and want to congratulate all our Team Brookline runners, and all the runners from our community who participated in the event.
Selectman Daley?
Yeah, well, it was, you know, as the chief said, it was a very big crowd, and, you know, as always, but I thought particularly this year, everyone was in very good spirits, and it was a pretty well-behaved crowd for the most part. And people find, you know, it was one of our first sort of spring-like days that we've had, and people were really enjoying it so much, and it's, I am, you know, struggling with anger as I think of these families who were injured, as I think of all of us taking, you know, having less enjoyment out of the marathon than we used to, because of the horror that happened to, you know, people from, I think that, I heard one was 71 years old down to this, the six and eight-year-old children who were so, one killed. And I thank our, all our departments for their efforts, and I think we'll all have to, as I say, think about future marathons, because we do get such nice big crowds in Brookline. So fortunately, we don't have as many television cameras and things as there are down at the finish line, so that probably means we're not quite the same level of target, but once this sort of thing has happened, it may give ideas to other people who are sick. So I hope that, you know, we can all reach out and help. I'm sure there's going to be some victims' funds, and so many people losing legs and things like that are going to need all the help we can give them.
Selectman Banker?
Thank you. It is obviously a very somber moment, but I would want to note that this really did, as the chiefs and as Dr. Ballsom indicated, bring out the best in-town employees and also volunteer citizens, including the Medical Reserve Corps and CERT, the Civilian Emergency Response Team, that responded when they were called. And also, local institutions and businesses. One thing that we had to do in Brookline was to clear the runners off of the course so that they weren't sent into Boston into what was a potential danger for them at that point. And Temple Oh Habbi Shalom, as Chief O'Leary has noted, provided a refuge for those runners. One of the newest businesses in Brookline, Whole Foods Market, provided protein bars for the runners, Buddhist Sea Asian Bistro, just a block away from Temple Oh Habbi Shalom, sent food, and Catering by Andrew. Andrew Weiner is a member of Brookline's CERT team, provided pasta and fruit for 150 runners. All of that was donated by those businesses. And as the chief noted, the buses got there, and the food was taken, I think by Casey Hatchett and Michael Raskin of our police department, taken down to Boston for the runners to have something. And it's my understanding that Casey Hatchett did that after finishing the marathon. So this really was a community effort on the part of people who had the, and citizens were offering their homes. We saw names of people that we all know and recognize who were volunteering their homes. This really was a community effort to do what people, both town employees, citizens, local businesses, local institutions could do to make a terrible situation a little bit less terrible.
Well, I'll just say, I think we're all tremendously impressed with the way folks came together in adversity and responded, and it was truly a miracle to me that we had so much in the way of health providers, either runners who offered their services, people who were observers who came forward. I'm certain that those folks who were most severely injured had their lives saved because there was such a great wealth of medical response available, and frankly, I guess, because it was the marathon, we had an army of ambulances, which you probably would not have in another situation if it had been, let's say, at the Red Sox game, horror of horrors. So it was a horrific event, and at the same time, all of the people who were there seemed to be able to make the right decisions and do what was necessary, and I think we're all tremendously grateful for it. So with that said, let us move on, and the next item on our calendar, back to our regular business of the evening, is public comment. Ms. Frawley.
Good evening. Regina Frawley from Precinct 16, the far corner of Brookline, South Brookline. We're starting another series of senior sociales at the library, at Putterham Library, beginning this Friday. And they start at 10:30, they go till 1:00. We offer complimentary coffee and pastries. The first week, we're just going to reacquaint, because we really started out a couple of years ago now, just being pure, basically pure social, and it has been a marvelous benefit for living in an area that you need a car, that you may or may not have anybody connected to the Baker School, etc. So the library's pretty much the only space we have, and people can be isolated in their modest, single-family homes that we have in particular. So I came up with this idea because I thought that we need each other, simple as that. And we don't have many choices, so the library is it, and we're not a library program, we're multi-sponsored, but we're not sponsored by the libraries, so we take what the library programs don't want. So this Friday is the first Friday that's available for us, and we're looking forward to it. The following Friday, we're having Brookline's Woman of the Year, Rita McNally, come, and I have no idea what Rita's going to talk about, but it could be anything, because she is a Renaissance woman, so one never knows. The following week, thanks to being here, I have corralled our own Alan Ballsom and his guitar for the following week, and he has been our guest before, as well as a sponsor for our yoga classes, which will be, hopefully, God willing, be available again in the fall. Alan also was one of the two instruments for me, when one of my constituents, senior constituents, wanted a wheelchair at the library, that her life would be so much better if she could bring her impaired husband out and not have to keep doing the wheelchair in and out of the car, that kind of thing. And Alan's paid for it. So he's, we're not even going to ask him for anything, just want him to come with his guitar, and he's agreed to do that. And then the final one will be May the 10th. So we have a series of four, and we've gotten, the newspapers have been very generous with advertising it, and we hope, we'll hope there'll be a good turnout. And we do prioritize Brookline residents, we really want to connect people, so if you can spread the word, appreciate it.
Absolutely, and it may be something you want to talk to the IT people and get your series listed on the town's website?
Oh, is that permission?
Well, I don't know about the calendar, but there's a set of, I guess what you might call current events, and so they could put up each week as they come forward.
Oh, thank you.
And I should be able to tell you who you should talk to about that, but at the moment, I'm blanking.
Well, I'm a senior myself, and any reminders, no matter how much I think about things, I do tend to have a few senior moments here and there, so anything that people might access to remind us.
Check in with the webmaster.
I will.
I think on the website, there's a link to the webmaster. If that doesn't work, call the IT department, and they will make sure that you get the right person.
Yeah, be glad to do it. Be glad to do it. Thank you.
Selectman Binka? Regina really got this program going and I would note here that last year, there were some town employees who bravely came forward and answered questions. I think Kevin Johnson was one of them, talking about snow and snow removal and potholes and issues of that sort. But here also, you are getting support from local businesses, or at least, I know last year you did donating. I don't want to, I don't want to anticipate, but...
No, no, my bad, as the kids say. Yes, Cheryl Ann's Bakery always donates kosher pastries. So I have already been in there twice to remind them and I'm going in a third time and all to set up the pickup kind of thing. And of course, the senior center provides the coffee and the cream and things of that sort. We did, and this is of interest because this is the new reality, we've had marvelous donations from Shaw's and Chestnut Hill, but they're having economic difficulties, so they have ceased for the time being, all these stores, they're not donating. But that is not to say anything other than that they've been marvelous and incredibly generous.
I know that there were a lot of very fancy cakes from them.
There have been.
But I'm pleased to hear that Cheryl Ann's is continuing.
They're continuing and there's usually leftovers and I usually pop them in the car and bring them over to the DPW because those guys can definitely finish up the bagels and whatever. So thank you for reminding me about the generosity. Thank you.
So this Friday, 10:30 to 1 is the first one.
Right. And the next three Fridays. Okay, moving along. Next item is a grant for Solarize Massachusetts. Ms. Goff? Oh. Solarize Massachusetts? You are going to talk about it, okay.
Yes, Fran Price.
I guess Howland has roofs.
Manager.
Okay, all right.
I'm here on behalf of the Planning Department and for my colleague Laura Curtis Hayes. As you know, in a couple of months ago, the town submitted an application to Mass Clean Energy Center to participate in the Solarize Mass Program. This is a program by the state, which is designed to increase the adoption of solar energy and further reduce the overall cost of solar power by offering residents and businesses discounted prices for solar. The, what you have in front of you should be a, an agreement between, oh, and the town, I should say, was selected among a group of communities to participate in this round one of Solarize Massachusetts 2013. You have a copy of the agreement that's been reviewed by Town Council. And basically, the role of the town is for $2,500 from the state is to pay for the, the advertising and public materials that the town will produce and distribute on behalf of the, the program to the Brookline community.
My understanding is this is meant to be a peer-driven program with trained coaches?
Yes, and for the town, I understand that the lead, that Brenna Loi is going to take the lead as this community solar coach for the town.
Okay, are there any questions about this grant, its purpose, et cetera? All right, seeing and hearing none, I move that we accept a grant in the amount of $2,500 and to execute a contract agreement with Mass CEC for this Solarize Massachusetts program. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Binka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you, Ms. Price. Next, we have the application for the appointment of an alternate manager at the wine press. Is there someone here to represent the wine press? It's not a requirement. Then I will move that we approve the application for a, an alternate manager, Casey McGann. There's a packet in the, that we, we received information in our packet and all seems to be in order. And I don't think there's any question about qualifications for this person. Any questions from members of the board?
Casey seems to have been at this for some time now.
Yeah.
Seems like it's high time she take that position.
Seems like they are taking advantage of our encouraging people to have alternate managers, so there's always coverage and people actually can have time off. Okay, I move, I move that we approve the application of Gora Inc., doing business as the wine press, holding it all kinds alcoholic beverage licenses, a packaged goods store, 1024 Beacon Street, to appoint Casey McGann as alternate manager. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Binka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And then I guess, Ms. Price, you want to come back again and tell us about the affordability reserve?
Yes, Fran Price, Housing Development Manager at the Planning Department. A couple of years ago, when we were anticipating a, our first foreclosure after many years of working in affordable homeownership, we approached the, and also knowing that we had a number of units that was supported through home monies, and if those were ever lost to affordability, the town would have a financial obligation to pay back HUD. We came and asked for a set aside from our housing reserve to address the, the, the long-term preservation of our homeownership program, affordability in our homeownership program. And we asked for a $500,000 set aside. And we thought by calling that a reserve, that was clear that we wanted to maintain that, that amount to the extent possible into the future. And we actually had our first vote soon after, also in 2011, to save a unit at 323 Boylston. We asked for and got, and used approximately $330,000 out of that reserve. And when the unit was rehabbed and resold for $278,000, we assumed that that, those funds would be returned to that same set aside or encumbered piece, piece of our housing trust. The, the Controller's Office did not feel that the vote by the selectman at that time was clear enough that the repayments into the housing trust that were based on allocations from the reserve would go back to keep that reserve capitalized. And that's, that minor clarification is what we're asking for now. And that is why we asked the vote that any revenues to the housing trust resulting from the resale of affordable units preserved using funding from the Affordable Preservation Reserve be returned to recapitalize that reserve. It's how we expected the program would work in the first place, but the Controller's Office felt they needed a clarification from you.
So my real question to you is, where's the money now?
It's in the housing trust, but it's not encumbered.
Okay, so the controller, the controller had it returned to the housing trust, but not in this reserve?
Well, not encumbered, so that, so that the free money would, it'd be clear how much free money we had to use.
Sure, right, I understand. Other questions for Ms. Price? Nope, then I move that we take the following vote, that any revenues to the housing trust resulting from the resale of affordable units, and not unites, that's an error, units, preserved using funding from the affordability preservation reserve be returned to recapitalize that reserve. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Binka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you, Ms. Price.
Thank you.
Mr. Leary, one hour late, I apologize. But we, we are very happy to see you. Even so.
Madam Chairman, members of the board, nice to be with you, although I know we're all in a somber and downcast mood this evening. With respect to my application for service on the Walnut Hills Board of Trustees, I will be brief. My service as a member of a cemetery board began in the 1980s when I went on the Board of Directors of the Holyhood Cemetery Association, which operates the Holyhood Cemetery in Brookline and St. Joseph Cemetery in West Roxbury. And I served on that board until the mid 1990s, when I stepped down as town administrator here. About two or three years later, I was asked by the President of Holyhood and the other board members if I would be interested in serving as general manager of the Holyhood Cemetery Association. And since it was close to home and many of the duties, although far smaller in scope than I had been used to, it still involved preparing budgets and capital improvement program and collective bargaining, since there is a union at the cemetery. Many of the same functions were contained in that job. And I thought I might do that for two or three years and, and lo and behold, I wound up serving 12 years as general manager of the Holyhood Cemetery Association. When I completed that stint in 2010, I went back on the board and I continue to serve as a member of the Holyhood Board of Directors. I noticed in this year's financial plan, comments by Mr. Klechner in his budget message with respect to cemetery trust funds and the dialogue with the cemetery trustees about the level of revenue that they allocate to support the ongoing operation and maintenance of Walnut Hill Cemetery. And that there would be further discussions in the, in the future regarding the most prudent and reasonable manner of allocating and expending cemetery revenue. I know that all cemeteries operated differently, but I just mentioned what we, how we have operated at Holyhood with respect to the budget. And it's a relatively small budget, $2.5 million, but we, we take in about $1.2 million from full interments and cremation interments. We do about 700 interments in a year. We realize about $800,000 from income from the perpetual care fund. Our perpetual care fund is about $25 million. So that is dedicated towards the operating budget. And then the remainder, which is about $520,000, we take from miscellaneous fees, the sale of liners, setting charges, rental of the chapel, that sort of thing. And so the three principal sources of revenue to balance the budget are the interment revenue, the interest from the perpetual care fund, and the fees, which may number eight or 10. And with respect to the sale of lots, and we sell 300 or 400 lots a year, we dedicate 50% of that income to the perpetual care fund. And the other 50%, we dedicate to capital improvements. So this year, we will, we will add about $250,000 to the perpetual care fund and we'll have a capital improvement program of about $250,000. So that's how we handle the income from the sale of, the sale of lots and graves. And as I've indicated, I know other cemeteries probably do that differently. But I think that my experience, both as a director and as general manager at Holyhood, would serve me in good stead as a member of this board. I've worked with boards, on boards all my life, and I think I should be able to bring some cohesion to the Walnut Hill Cemetery Board. So I'll be glad to take any questions.
Do we have questions? Yes, Selectman Binka?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Leary, for applying for this and, and offering your expertise. You indicate that among the issues that you'd like to see the board and commission address are the allocation of cemetery fees and trust fund revenues, which you just alluded to. Are there, are there principles that you think should be followed in the case of a public cemetery or Walnut Hills as opposed to a Holyhood or a private cemetery or, or any, are there any specifics that you think would be applicable?
Yeah, well, I think it is important to, you know, retain as much as possible in the trust funds and the perpetual care fund, which we call it, at, at Holyhood. On the other hand, and I have no idea what the, what the income is on those, on those trust funds, but I think it is reasonable to expect that that source of revenue could be allocated towards the operating budget of the department. With respect to the sale of lots, we put 50% of that income in our perpetual care fund. Other cemeteries might allocate 75%. But I think, I think 50% is a, is a reasonable amount. And then the balance, it always seemed to us that the balance of that income from the sale of lots should go towards capital improvement. And I think that's a principle that i- is also reasonable. So, you know, I would, I would try to be helpful in this, in this dialogue and I know cemetery trustees in many cemeteries do not want to give up much of their revenue in their funds. And they feel very, very provincial about that. But I think there is some room to, to be flexible without jeopardizing the status of, of the trust funds.
Other questions for Mr. Leary? Selectman Daley? Just have to say, you seem particularly well qualified for this job. Selectman Goldstein?
Dick, thank you. Thank you for applying for this. Are you going to remain on the St. Joseph Holyhood Board?
Well, I am, I am planning to, I've spoken to Erin Gallantine and she's indicated that it's not a heavy commitment in terms of meetings. And at Holyhood, we, we just meet four times a year as a board and then I serve on the Operations Committee, which is a subcommittee, which meets four times a year. So I, I would like to continue that affiliation.
I, I ask this merely as a formality and nothing more. Is there any problem that this is a conflict of interest somehow, that the cemeteries are in competition with each other and, and that allegiances would be, would be torn?
I, I don't see, I don't see that as a problem. Holyhood is a private, independent cemetery and, and a municipal cemetery, I think, is in a different, in a different class. Our, our competition frankly is with cemeteries like Forest Hills, Newton. There's one in Everett, name escapes me, but there really isn't any, any conflict that I see between the two.
I mean, maybe to put a slightly sharper point on the question, is, is marketing part of the, part of the issue? of the issue? Is there a marketing effort that goes along with either of the cemeteries?
Yeah, there is a marketing effort that goes with it. At Holyhood, frankly, we rely chiefly on funeral directors who are familiar with our cemetery to refer people to either Holyhood or St. Joseph. There's some advertising that goes into, you know, the sale of lots, the sale of lots and graves. But I don't know of any area where the two cemeteries would come in conflict.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for your interest, and I certainly second Selectman Daley's comment. I believe you are supremely well qualified. Moving along, I think we will skip the next item on our calendar to item number 10, which is an increase in hours for Olea Cafe. Is there someone here who will speak to that?
Yes, competition of cemeteries.
Yeah, right.
I hope they don't win my business.
You're in a different business. I understand that you would like to increase your hours.
Yeah, basically, we close at 10:00 now.
Yeah.
And we'd like to increase that to 12:00 on the weekdays and 1:00 Friday, Saturday.
Right.
Also, there is a typo, for sure.
Yeah, we know. We saw that.
We don't serve liquor, like, 8:00 AM.
You're not allowed, yes, we understand. It's not 11:00 AM till noon time.
Oh, no, there's something that says like "from," for the liquor, "from 8:00 AM." Like, we're not, this would be 11:00.
Oh, well, that is perhaps what's printed on your license because it's what the ABCC permits. And in some cases, they were assigned by default.
Okay.
But in fact, this is a very good thing you're doing because we are very pleased to see that it will now accurately reflect your operating hours. And since our regulations require that you serve food along with alcoholic beverages, we wouldn't want you to be licensed to serve alcohol before you serve food. Anyway. So, do we have questions? Yes, Selectman Daley?
Yeah, well, I'm generally in favor, because my adult children are always telling me that not enough stuff is open in Brookline late at night. And you are not right near, right on your block, there's nobody you could be keeping awake. But there are people up above across the street, are there not?
There is very minimal residential on that block. I know a couple that have, like, a child because they're like our daily customers. And I don't know, maybe there's like two or more or something.
Okay, well, I just ask you to keep in mind, you know, late night noise. Try to, you know, talk to your employees and make sure that they're, you know, they're mindful of not being too noisy at night when you close up.
We understand that there's, because we have outside seating, we understand that it's at 11:00 PM, right? A gap for outside.
Well, that would be our policy, and actually, that was going to be my question to you. For outdoor seating, we would not want alcoholic beverages to be served that late.
Right. We need, you know, we're not that kind of place anyway, but we want either.
So we can vote this with a restriction, that outdoor service be limited to 11:00 PM?
That's how I understand it, being done otherwise, other places in the city, in the town. We will be coming in front of you soon. Because of the more hours, we're going to need another alternate manager.
Ah, yes. Probably so.
We're going to start that soon, so.
Good, all right. Well, we, as you know, are very much in favor of having alternate managers. Okay, are there any other questions for Mr. Taye?
No, Taye?
Taye? Okay.
Anyway, thank you.
Then I will move an increase in hours for Gourmet Republic Incorporated, doing business as Olea Cafe, holder of a wine and malt beverage license and is a common victular at 195 Washington Street, for an increase in hours, two, for common victular, from 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM, Sunday through Saturday. And Sunday through, sorry, from, I should say, "to." All right, we're moving this to Sunday through Thursday from 6:00 AM to midnight. And Friday and Saturday, 6:00 AM until 1:00 AM for service of food. And for liquor hours, two, Monday through Thursday, 11:00 AM until midnight. Friday and Saturday, 11:00 AM until 1:00 AM. Sunday, noon until midnight, with the condition that outdoor service must cease at 11:00 PM. Any?
Perfect.
Okay? All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Benka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
And we'll welcome you back for your alternate manager.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next item, I gather, has been postponed, so we will go then to Vino de Vino, change in manager. If there's someone here for Vino de Vino?
Good evening.
Good evening. Identify yourself, please, for the recorder.
Yes, my name is Rodolfo Nerati, and I would be the new manager on record.
You're the manager-to-be?
Correct.
The manager, okay. Are there any questions for Mr. Nerati? I think we've got all of the documentation in order for this. I don't remember having a question about it.
The only indication is that we're waiting on a fingerprint.
I thought we got that.
The prints were taken quite a few weeks ago.
Yeah, they're not getting the reports back. It's not his fault, it's our, well, it's the delay in the processing, I think. But no other concerns were raised.
He doesn't look worried about the results.
No.
So you went to the Harvard Kennedy School.
Correct.
Can I ask you, are you aware of our sting operations that are conducted from time to time in Brookline package store establishments? How do you intend to be ready for that?
Very aware. And we've fortunately passed them all so far. And I attended the seminar that was done, what was it now, a month ago? And that was very helpful. And we had a training session with the staff since then. And everybody on the staff is tip certified, as well as, you know, sort of in-store trained and certified as well. So it's an ongoing process.
You aware of the requirement for a logbook that we have in Brookline?
We have one.
Why don't you tell us a little bit about how you comply with that?
I mean, we're lucky not to have very many incidents. Actually, we have had no incidents. But we have, I think it's Lieutenant Hayes who comes by regularly. And last time he came by, he came with a list of all the requirements that the town has. And I think there were one or two things that we needed to update, but the logbook had already been in place. I don't know if it's a good or a bad thing. I think it's a good thing that there's nothing in it. Because we haven't had anything, I think, that has risen to the level that would require recording. But if such a thing were to happen, I'm very certain the staff would contact me and it would, or I would be there, obviously, and it would get recorded.
One, just a comment, and that is, because we just spoke about an alternate manager, our regulations allow you to have an alternate manager, and we do encourage it, simply because our requirement is that there be a manager responsible on the premises at all times. And we recognize that that's sometimes difficult to do physically. So you might want to consider having an alternate manager available.
Our intention was to get through this process first, and as soon as we clear this, to undertake that as well, so that we'd have some more liberty.
Okay, all right. Any other questions? Then I move that we approve the application of Vino de Vino, two. Raphael Keller Go Manager, holder of a wine and malt beverage license as a retail package store at 1669 Beacon Street, for a change of manager to Rodolfo Nerati. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Benka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Thank you.
You are the manager and in charge. All right, Clover Food Truck becoming a fixed place operation? Or something like that?
Something like that. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. For the record, my name is Adam Barnosky with the Law Office of Robert L. Allen and 300 Washington Street in Brookline Village. With me here today is Air Muir, he's the president of Clover Fast Foods, Inc. Mr. Muir is a graduate of MIT and Harvard Business School. He started Clover Fast Foods four years ago with the philosophy, the vegetarian food should be simple, delicious, fast, and well-priced. The company has quickly grown over the past four years, now to include two stores and seven food trucks in the Boston area. We're interested in bringing Clover to Brookline with a storefront at 6 Harvard Street. We're looking for a food vendor's license there. This is the previous location for Papa Gino's, right here in Brookline Village. It'll be the first location in Brookline, it'll be the third overall. I do have a floor plan that I don't believe was included in the application package for your review.
How about a menu?
What's that?
A menu?
A menu.
The food, the important thing.
I'm going to defer to Mr. Muir to maybe describe a few items on the menu, if I could.
Sure, happy to. We serve breakfast, as well as lunch and dinner. The breakfast menu is simple. We make everything from scratch each day. A lot of it changes. The menu's not very large, so at breakfast, you'll find beautiful coffees, teas. You'll find granola with yogurt and fruit, muffins that just came out of the oven, popovers, if any of you are familiar with those. We bake them in small batches through the morning, breakfast sandwich. And then at lunchtime and dinner, the menu's basically the same. We serve sandwiches. They're rotating, there'll always be four or five different sandwiches available. And in the wintertime, we serve salads with those. In the summertime, I'm sorry, in the summertime salads and wintertime soups. And we do french fries as well. And we have like platter option, similar to the sandwiches, but doesn't include the bread for people that are avoiding bread for some reason.
Okay, any questions? Selectman Daley? No, I'm just going to say, I'm happy to see you having a fixed location. Not being a tweeter, I can never keep up with the food trucks. Just, I'm guessing that you have, are aware of our health department's memo, but in particular, I would, I'm sure you know that you're to avoid trans fats. And I guess I want to put you on to alert that we have recently passed a ban on styrofoam products for takeout, so you will want to be aware of that. And I don't believe there are any other questions or conditions that were raised. So, oh, Selectman Goldstein, sorry.
Well, you're, how many food trucks are you operating?
We have seven food trucks right now.
And where do you garage them?
We garage them in East Cambridge. We have a facility over there.
Any chance you'll be moving any of them to Brookline?
No, not in a permanent way. There's, we've, through the Brookline Food Truck Program, we have a site that we'll be parking at, I think, once a week. But the trucks will remain garaged over in Cambridge.
Is this your only brick and mortar operation?
This'll be our third. We have one in Harvard Square and one in East Cambridge.
Thank you.
Okay. If there are no other questions? And given that, I want to be clear, this is a food vendor license, there will be no seating on the premises. I move that we approve the application from, get my, gosh. There we go, sorry. Application of Clover Fast Foods Incorporated, doing business as Clover, Air Muir President, for a food vendor license at 6 Harvard Street. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Benka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, before us, is another food vendor license. This is Hong Kong Cafe, two.
Hi, how are you feeling?
Hello, welcome.
Hi, hello.
And again, we ask that you identify yourself for the person who's taking the notes. Just give us your name.
He's Toli, and I'm his wife, Chao Yul.
Okay. And you are planning to open in the site of the Yummy House Restaurant?
Yep.
And this is going to be strictly a takeout operation?
Yes.
I see. I know your other location is a restaurant with seating, correct?
Yes.
Do we have any questions for the applicant? Pretty straightforward, I think.
Yep.
Just our reminder for people in the takeout business, we have prohibited styrofoam containers, so you need to be aware of that. And you will certainly get more information from our health department about any other conditions that you need to, that you have to follow. Then I move that we approve the application of TL 1391, doing business as Hong Kong Cafe, two, Tao Lin owner, for a food vendor license at 1391 Beacon Street. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Benka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you.
I'd like to see your menu, too.
I can pull your menu right now, we can pick it up at the car.
Oh, that's okay. It's just nice when we get an application for a business that hasn't been in town before to see what your food offering is.
Sure.
But you can leave one some time at the Selectman's office. It's okay, you don't have to do it now.
Next week, yeah. When we open.
When you open, yes.
Yep, maybe May, in the middle of May.
All right, good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck, thank you.
Bye-bye.
All right, next item is Gary. This one's a little more complicated because we're doing a transfer, and it means we will have to vote separately, common victular and entertainment, before the alcoholic beverage license. Please identify yourself again.
Good evening, member of the board. My name is Margaret Su, counsel for Huan Yang, Inc. I have here today Ms. Ying Chen, who is hopeful to be the new, the next owner of Gary Shuzyi.
Okay. I have a question, because it says here you have no prior experience in the food business, and yet you propose to be the onsite manager.
It's not quite true. I've always worked in a restaurant throughout my years in school and college. I went to Boston College and got my bachelor's degree. And all those years, I've worked in a restaurant part-time.
Oh, okay.
Ever since I graduated in 2004, so I found this permanent job as a manager, so I haven't worked in a restaurant. But my family used to own the restaurant when I was a child, so.
Okay, so you really do know the business. My question was simply for somebody who, whose application said you'd been working in furniture design, which is a great profession. Just curious to know what you were going to do with a new restaurant?
Yes.
That's all.
So it's not brand-new to me, yes.
Got it, okay. Other questions?
Can I follow up on that one, please? Your prior restaurant, I had the same initial concern as Selectman DeWitt. Your prior restaurant experiences, it include liquor service?
Yes. I've worked in a very famous one in Brookline, Fugaku before.
Okay. Selectman Daley? Yeah. And you did give us a menu, thank you.
Yes. As a former student at BC, you're probably very familiar with some of our As a former student at B.C., you're probably very familiar with some of our concerns about underage drinking in town. Very familiar. And of course, it'll be the other, you know, the competition who would be coming to your establishment down at the other end of Beacon Street. But they, we take our liquor laws very seriously. We, and I know you're tip certified, I see that, but we, you know, actually want, expect people to follow through, ask for that identification. And not serve if they don't have it or don't, don't show it to you.
If I may also wanted to add on record that Ms. Chen has already spoke to and meet with the Brookline Police Department regarding the service of alcohol and all that. And had a very good discussion and understanding of what the requirements are as well.
Good. Okay, any other questions about Gary?
We ask, are you gonna be doing a takeout business too?
Uh, yes.
And in terms of, I know it's a very crowded area for parking, for traffic. And any idea about how your takeout personnel will park and what the plan is for them to. What they're gonna do with their car while they're getting the food?
Well, right, I think I can answer that. The way how a lot of these takeout businesses work is that you sign up with one of these online services like Footler. And then what happened is that they will have a driver to come and pick up the food and they go right away. So that's the, that's what, you know, I know that Ms. Chen hasn't really signed up any contract with them, but normally, generally, that's how, that's what we usually.
I see. I guess what I'm asking is, is it gonna involve double parking on Beacon Street or is there?
They're on Harvard Street.
I'm sorry.
Harvard.
On Harvard Street is what I meant to say.
The truth is that there are no, at that place, I believe there are no loading zones spaces. So the parking in front of the restaurant is all metered parking. And so you need to be aware. I mean, the selectman is correct. If someone is coming to pick up and needs to leave their vehicle, they'll be in a metered parking space because there's not a loading zone on that block, I think.
Is there a rear alley or a side street, I think is?
There is a side street though.
Hi, I just wanted to identify myself. So I'm the current owner of Gary Japanese Restaurant. So for the delivery drivers that we have, we park on the side street. There's plenty of parking. It's on Alton Place. We never double park. It's just a single lane. There's usually parking or there's like on one of the side streets, so it never blocks traffic.
Good.
Good. I'm glad you have a plan. I hope that you'll be flexible and respectful of your neighbors in Alton Place actually too. Because you'd be surprised, it's become somewhat of an issue in town. We do, we do hear about it, complaint in seemingly a lot recently.
Thank you. Certainly, we'll definitely make note with whoever the vendors that we choose to, to inform them of the parking availabilities.
Thank you.
And their restrictions.
Thank you.
Any other questions before we take a vote?
If I may, I also wanted to just point out that we also have a change of hours and we would like to also note it to the board that we are seeking some hour changes on our common victualer license.
That was not posted on the calendar.
Actually, I actually just noticed that today on today's agenda list as well, but I believe when we filed the application, that was very known to.
May well be.
It's, if you want to find it in the application packet, it is on the inside of the front page. It's page one. In other words, if you flip over fifteen dash one, it's on fifteen dash two. And the request is to extend hours from ten thirty P.M. till midnight.
When are you planning to open?
Upon the approval of the A B C C liquor license.
So it won't be imminent? I think we have to come back on the change of hours?
Well, it's certainly not posted. What's in the ad?
This is, if you have to come back, you probably don't have to come back, so she doesn't have to pay her lawyer to come twice.
Right.
Yes. You know, it could be just her coming back and there, I don't, there's no additional fee because it's our mistake, I think, that we didn't post this.
A matter of indicating to the public that the hours would be changed. You're right.
Since this is a public hearing.
Right.
We haven't given notice to the public.
Sure, and I, like I said, I certainly would, that's why I noticed that it wasn't on the agenda and I, like I said.
Well, thank you for bringing it to our attention. That was, that was very responsible and helpful and we appreciate it. Having said that, what we can do is put this on.
No, we can't do it.
We can't do it next week, right.
There's gotta be certain notice.
Right. We have to do a public notice that indicates the hours change. And that means it will probably be three weeks before we can revisit this. Having said that, we could vote everything except the hours.
I mean, we could vote the current hours.
Yeah, you'd be, you would have to operate using the current hours and what you'd have to do would be, you would get your common victular license, you'd get your entertainment license, you'd get your beverage license approved by us. And then you would have to return, probably in a month, I would say, because that may be how long it takes to get all the postings done.
I would guess she's not gonna have her A B C C by then.
Probably not anyway. So the operation would have to continue with the current hours until we can repost this, but then it would just be for a change of hours. That's all.
And I don't believe that you have to go back to the A B C C with respect to a change of hours. It's just a change of ownership.
I think you're correct on that. And I guess with that, I also wanted to, which is not on the agenda, but I also wanted to point out is that. As you can see, my client is in a, in a very sensitive condition, so we are also proposing.
Couldn't.
We're gonna be proposing a backup and a license hold manager.
An alternate manager.
Alternate manager, perfect.
I haven't picked up that form with Brenda because we weren't thinking about it at first, but now that we.
Well, it sounds like you have two reasons to come back.
Exactly.
Okay.
Since that's the case, we will do it then at the same time. I mean, I'm sure my client will come back and we'll get those paperwork filed and make sure we'll have that here as well.
Okay, alright. But I think we can vote. There, we'll have to take four different votes, but I think we can vote all of the matters that are officially before us and we can. Hear a change of hours at a later meeting. Okay, is that the end of questions, comments from the board?
This is a public hearing.
Yep, it is a public hearing. I'm asking if we're all finished yet. It's a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak either in favor or in opposition to this license? Seeing and hearing none. We will move ahead with our votes separately. The first, I move that we approve the application of Huan Ying Inc. Doing business as Gary Japanese Fusion Restaurant, Ying Chen President and Manager. For a common victular license at one eighty-seven Harvard Street. That's vote number one. I'm gonna read them all off and unless you object, we can vote them all in one, at one time. Is any?
That's fine with me.
Okay, alright. That's vote number one. Vote number two would be, I move to approve the application. For a common victular, the holder of a common victular license, assuming we approved the first one. At one eighty-seven Harvard Street for an entertainment license to include TV and radio. Actually, let's vote those two first, alright? All in favor of votes one and two, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Benka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And then we will take a vote to approve a wine and malt beverages license. I move that we approve the application of Gary Cuisine. Holder of, wait a minute. Of Gary Cuisine Incorporated doing business as Gary Japanese Fusion Restaurant, Gary Zhao Yong Huang President. And holder of a wine and malt beverages license as a common victular for a transfer to Huan Ying Incorporated doing business as Gary Japanese Fusion Restaurant, Ying Chen President and Manager. And then the second vote of this would be, I move to approve the application of Huan Ying Incorporated doing business as Gary Japanese Fusion Restaurant, Ying Chen President and Manager, holder of a wine and malt beverage license as a common victular. At one eighty-seven Harvard Street for a pledge of license. All in.
Do we need to identify to whom the pledge is?
Don't know, but we can if you want to. I think it's the current owner.
Is it to the current owner?
It's the current owner.
Okay, so it would be to.
There's an agreement in the packet.
To Gary Cuisine Inc.
Okay, alright. Kate, do you have that as a final word? Alright, all in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Benka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And we will expect to see you back again, perhaps with someone else with you. Possibly.
Your lawyer need not come back.
Right.
No offense.
Right, right. Okay.
Congratulations.
That gets us past our licensing matters and the next items, we're gonna go back to. The warrant articles that we've already held public hearing for. And the, it's articles number eleven, twelve, and fourteen. There's some language changes that we received from the petitioner on Article eleven and Article twelve. That was at your places this evening, so if you want to just take a moment and look at the language for Article eleven.
What was the change on Article eleven?
Yeah, I don't, I don't see it.
Comma?
Oh.
I think, it's in red. It's in red. It's tiny, but it's in red.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Are there any questions or comments about the subject matter of Article eleven and the change that's been recommended? Are we ready to vote this one?
Yes.
Okay, then I move favorable action on Article eleven. All in favor, as amended, all in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Benka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. There is a more substantial change to Article twelve. I'll give everybody a moment to read.
I just wonder, have we heard from the webmaster that this is any, no problem?
We do notice this regularly.
I don't think it's a problem.
Okay.
I don't have any problem with those changes and I would vote, I'd really vote this one too.
Alright, we're ready to go? Fine. Then I will, are there any other members who want to comment about the proposed changes, language changes?
No, the, the second change was something that I suggested in case titles changed in the future, so we didn't have to keep amending the bylaw.
Yeah, right.
And this particular language was town council's suggestion for dealing with that.
Good. Then I move favorable action on Article twelve. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Benka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And finally, the disorderly behavior, which is Article fourteen, for which there are no proposed language changes.
Yeah, I've gotta say, I'm conflicted on this one because while I'm very much in favor of the concept, there are language that. Squarely, I think violates the First Amendment. It's a bit of a problem.
Well, you can propose a language change.
Yeah, but apparently the moderator's already said he wouldn't take it.
Oh, really? I didn't understand that.
That's what I understood from Ms. Helen.
And that, and I think, I think the issue was that that language is in the existing bylaw, the language that concerns you.
Right, we were dealing with a former, they were actually making a correction to something that was already in the language, so it's kind of hard to.
Yeah, but when they, it said, it spelled course like, of course.
Right.
And which, I think that when they, they change it to what they meant to say, C.O.A.R.S.E. That is what the A.G.'s office is gonna look at and say, no, course, course, language is, you can't outlaw that. So, you know, the other thing didn't make a lot of sense.
Well, then let the A.G. decide for us. That would be one way to get to the solution. I, Selectman Daley, I totally understand what you're talking about and I think we all had some concerns. But on the other hand, the A.G. actually has the authority to make that change if the moderator has already said he wouldn't take an amendment, so. Any thoughts from other members before we take a motion? Alright, then I move favorable action on Article fourteen. All in favor, please say aye. Selectman Daley?
Aye.
Selectman Benka?
Aye.
Selectman Goldstein?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And now we will get finally to our warrant articles and amazingly, we are on time. Ms. Selko. Article fifteen is the floor area calculation.
Good evening. I'm Polly Selko, Assistant Director of Regulatory Planning. The Planning Department is submitting four warrant articles. Articles fifteen through eighteen. The first one has to do with gross floor area. Several years ago, a committee, actually a selectman's committee for looking at the gross floor area, suggested a change to this section. And suggest, they were very much concerned with homes that were being demolished and McMansions replacing them. So they suggested that when single-family homes used things like atriums and extra space cathedral ceilings. That the space above twelve feet be counted proportionally towards the gross floor area. That was used several times, but it also became apparent that it applied not only to single and two-family residences, but also to multifamily, commercial uses, and institutional uses. And the thought was that really for those other uses, it can be sometimes very appropriate to have extra height space. For instance, an apartment building to have a lobby that's taller than twelve feet. In a, in a commercial, in a.
I'm guessing you're standing in a room that might be taller than twelve feet.
Uh, I would think so, yes.
Maybe?
Just about twelve. I'm, you know, I don't have my tape measure with me.
I'm thinking of those institutional spaces, that's all.
Right. So I think you get, you get the point, that there are times for gymnasiums and schools that you, you want to have space above twelve feet and it shouldn't. The applicant shouldn't be penalized for having that higher space. And so the Planning Department with the recommendation of the zoning bylaw committee have suggested changing this. So that only the space above twelve feet, when it applies to one and two-family homes would apply. And that that's all it applies to, will no longer apply to commercial institutional spaces. And of course, institutional spaces as well, if they are protected by the Dover Amendment, are exempt anyway.
Aren't we worried about McRestaurants happening?
Well, just to add that there are still height limits and there's still setback limits and there's still the F.A.R. limits. I don't know if you want me to take one at a, at a time.
I think we should do one at a time. Selectman Benka, do you want to comment? I gathered the zoning bylaw committee must have reviewed this.
Right, the zoning, well, the zoning.
Originated it, I should suggest.
Right, the zoning bylaw committee, I think. May have initiated this one. And. It will permit buildings with more volume. When they are commercial buildings or multifamily, multi-unit buildings that might have, for example, a slightly higher lobby. But it was the view of the zoning bylaw committee that. In many cases, in order to keep floor heights consistent with adjacent buildings, it might be appropriate to have. to keep floor heights consistent with adjacent buildings, it might be appropriate to have a higher lobby in a multi-unit building, for example, if the first floors are higher in the adjoining buildings. This would, there are, as Ms. Selko indicated, there are buildings that would be protected by the Dover Amendment with respect to ceiling height. For example, a gymnasium in a school would be, a worship space in a church or synagogue would be as a religious use. This would potentially allow more volume with the same FAR in a theater. And certainly, that is one issue that is coming before this town meeting. So people should be aware of that. But it was the view of the zoning bylaw committee that obviously, ceiling heights in excess of 12 feet are appropriate in theaters and other spaces similar to that. And that the overall bulk of the building is controlled through the setback and height requirements, regardless of how the FAR is calculated within those buildings.
Questions for Ms. Selko?
I'll just comment that I remember this discussion well from a few years ago, and it was always in the context of single-family houses, so I, you know, feel perfectly okay that we now memorialize that intent. I'll also comment that I was in a brand-new, single-family home in neighbor, in neighboring Newton last week. Beautiful house, big house, granted, but not what you'd look at and call a McMansion, though. And the brokers there were bragging that they had 14-foot ceilings, and there was nothing about that house that was offensive. So in the future, we might try and, we might think about that maybe 14 feet is the way to go, not rather than 12, but not...
I have a question. You know, there are A-frame houses that probably do have just normal ceiling heights. That's a particular kind of design. Is there any relief on that for residential homes, for a single family?
Well, the floor area ratios in the town are fairly generous, so they can meet the floor area ratio. But no, there is no special exemption for a certain style of house.
I can even think of modern homes where there's a double-height space with like a mezzanine in it, and that would certainly often be much greater than 12 feet.
Right, keep in mind, though, that it's not double-counting.
Right.
The space above 12 feet is only counted proportionally at a fraction.
Yeah, okay. I just, this is one of those be careful what you wish for things, I guess. That's my fear.
Well, and also, if you had a mezzanine or a loft, that space, even apart from this, would be counted, because there would be a floor there, that would be counted as a separate floor.
All right. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak either in favor or in opposition to this proposed zoning amendment? Seeing and hearing none, we will move on, because we are not taking any votes tonight. Ms. Selko?
Yes, Article 16 is a zoning amendment related to the definitions sections for lodger and lodging house. It turns out that the state and several of the nonprofit institutions who deal with affordable housing are all favoring having in-room kitchen facilities if certain stringent safety requirements are met. And so this would allow that in certain situations, specifically if 100% of the units are affordable per Chapter 40B. And as you know, your committee has been working on lodging house regulations as well, and those lodging house regulations have had the input of the fire chief and the police chief and the health department, et cetera. And that they will have very stringent regulations about safety features, so that if someone does have cooking facilities in a room, the stove top has to be vented to the outside, there have to be extra emergency accesses, a whole variety of things. And they are inspected annually as well. This was also recommended by the zoning bylaw committee and the Housing Advisory Board, and I know Roger Blood is here tonight, and he wanted to make a few comments.
Well, this is a public hearing, but we get to ask questions first.
Okay.
Selectman Daley?
Yeah, I'm just wondering about, we have a number of group homes in town that serve a population of people with intellectual and emotional issues. And I'm wondering, are those people pressing for cooking facilities in those rooms?
No, I don't believe so. This is really just for lodging house. And one thing is, you know, obviously, much more convenient and much more affordable to be able to cook meals in your own room. Most lodging houses will have a common kitchen, but they're, you know, people often like to have their privacy and like to keep the food in their own room.
And I'm just to clarify, those group homes usually have a person who is on-site as a facilitator, I guess, could be supervisor, but, and often organizes meals, which is very different from a lodging house, where depending on the kind, it could be a person who's perhaps living alone and just wants to be economical, and they choose to live in a lodging house. So it can have an economic impact on someone like that.
Most of the group families treat the people who live there as a family.
Right.
And so they usually eat their meals together.
Have group meals, right. But a lodging house, that might not be the case at all. Some it is, some it isn't. Anyway, Mr. Blood? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak either in favor or in opposition to this warrant article? I guess you could speak in whichever direction you like.
Good evening. I'm Roger Blood, Chair of the Housing Advisory Board, and also a member of the Zoning Bylaw Commission. And as your, the committee that your Housing Policy Advisors, the Housing Advisory Board unanimously recommends and supports this particular warrant article. For quite some time, lodging houses have been a priority type of housing for the town and for the Housing Advisory Board's efforts. I'm sure you're familiar with several success stories over the years, two on Upper Beacon Street, 1754 and 1876, and a couple on Lower Beacon Street, including those sponsored by the Committee for Elder Homelessness and the Pine Street Inn. The, up until now, lodging houses and our current zoning bylaw has reflected this, have been just individual rooms for single individuals, and mainly targeted for those who are employed, typically in the town, but are of relatively low income. And one thing unusual about the lodging house zoning is that there's a very low parking ratio compared with other types of development in town, as the type of occupant, being economically limited also, normally would not own an automobile and use public transportation to go to work. One of the objectives of the Housing Advisory Board through the Housing Trust is to leverage as much of our local funds as we have been able to, and this has been certainly true in the lodging houses we've done to date, so that when we've recently got some indications that the state's housing policy has been evolving with regard to lodging houses into what they're calling here enhanced lodging house units, which do have some individual cooking facilities within the room, we wanted to be sure that we would continue to be ahead of the curve, so that when proposals come along that look good to us, lodging houses that are affordable, consistent with Chapter 40B, safe, fully renovated in good physical condition, and typically professionally managed, often by a nonprofit sponsor, that we would continue to be able to use our local funds to leverage state funds, which may now be favoring more this enhanced type of lodging house unit. So we think this is a timely article. We think it is well coordinated with the licensing and the building department's efforts on the safety side, and therefore, we would recommend that you consider approving this for town meeting's vote.
Okay, questions? Actually, Mr. Blood, do you have a question?
Can I just make one other comment, because the, we did, the planning department did send you a memo, because although the zoning amendment was correct, in the preamble, we had omitted a reference to Section 4.07, Use 7. And we are suggesting that in your vote, that you suggest that that be added. I know that comes next week.
That'll be an amended, right, amended language.
Right.
Okay.
Correct.
All right, so, Selectman Goldstein?
So there's a set of regulations that are going to need to go in place with this, right? And can we just talk a little about, assuming this is adopted, at what point those regulations go into place?
Well, I'll turn it over to Ms. DeWitt, because she's Chair of the committee. Well, you're on the committee, too.
Actually, he's on the committee, too.
You'll have to tell me when you're planning to, I know it hasn't been approved yet, but isn't it imminent that you're going to approve them?
Well, this board would have to approve them, obviously, so I guess my question is, how do we coordinate these two events? What's the best way of doing this?
Well, of course, the zoning doesn't actually take effect.
Until the AG approves it.
Until the AG approves it. So they're really, we're talking several months. Town meeting isn't until May, and then the AG has up to six months to approve it.
I do believe we have our final licensing review of the proposed lodging house regulations coming up at the next meeting, so it could come before the selectmen in May, before, it's possible to come before the selectmen, before town meeting. So you might feel that the two will go forward together.
Yeah, well, what I'm struggling with is, on the one hand, if we approve the regulations before the zoning amendment is in place, that doesn't make any sense, but I, on the other, but...
Well, they're somewhat independent.
What use of regulations without a cause for using them?
Well, I think you can approve them.
But on the other hand, I think town meeting might feel more comfortable about this if they need the regulations to be there.
I would urge you before town meeting to pass the regulations. If the regulations were to pass and the zoning doesn't pass, well, the zoning overrides it. The zoning is what allows the use.
Okay, so that's the answer to my question, then. The regulations should come.
Should, absolutely, and I think the argument should, would be made, I would imagine, anyway, because one of the changes, which I appreciate, and I should say, I had mixed feelings about the deed restricted limitation, but one of the other changes that I do appreciate is that the word "unlicensed" was removed from the use. So it's basically arguing that lodging houses must be licensed, and therefore, when the lodging house regulations are approved, that will create the standards that you mentioned that would be in place, should there be any cooking facilities permitted. So it means that we would want those regulations to be passed congruently with the permission to have cooking facilities. So I mean, I would prefer, if we were successful in having it approved by the selectmen before town meeting, if you can do that.
In that case, I would think that, once we approve some regulations and pass some regulations, we'd want those distributed to town meeting members, so that they can understand that, understand the warrant article in that context.
Sure, yeah. Well, that would be our goal. Selectman Binka?
Yeah, as I understand, just as a preview of coming attractions, the licensing committee is thinking of regulations in consultation with the fire department and the building department that would limit the cooking facilities to electric two-burner stoves as opposed to four-burner and gas stoves that would require venting to the outside and so forth, that essentially, in consultation with the fire department, you're developing regulations that will ensure that these meet certain safety standards, safety requirements, and...
Just in a question of what you just said, do these units have less, fewer requirements for insulation and so forth than you would in an apartment?
I'm not sure insulation is going to be one of the standards, but certainly venting and power source utilities.
Right, no, but I was wondering why...
Fire protection, you know, like fires.
Yes, I was wondering why the restriction on gas, where you're allowed, would be allowed to have gas.
Because you can have an open flame. That would not be considered safe.
Yeah, but I'm saying you can have that in an apartment, so what's different about these units than apartment buildings, that they need to have more restrictions?
They're very small. And it's not a separate room.
I think, no, I...
I don't know whether that's a state regulation or what, but we've been told that they can only have electric cooktops.
It's a fair question, and perhaps it's not necessary, but as I understand it, there really has not been any pushback to the restrictions that are being proposed, and the lodging house operators are comfortable with them.
They're consistent with building code, they're consistent with fire safety, and that's the reason we've accepted those as recommendations from those people who said that's how you do it and keep it safe.
I think it's a, to be honest, I think it's a density issue. I think with single-room occupancy, you have a lot of, first of all, you have a lot of cooking facilities in a small space, and you have a lot of people living in a small space, so that a, an event, you know, a fire or event would be much more impactful, given that density, than it would be in an apartment.
Yeah, they are, the units are significantly smaller than, maybe not than micro-units that are now being developed in Boston, but are significantly smaller, could be significantly smaller than even a standard studio apartment.
Right. And just to point out that, you know, we have many lodging houses in town that are in older buildings, and it's very unlikely that those will be converted to allow cooking in the room because of the expense of having to go ahead and retrofit them, so that they did meet the fire safety issues.
And they're also generally not deed restricted, so the deed restriction, other than assuring affordable housing, tends to assure a higher quality of housing with some kind of professional sponsorship, that because they're requiring some kind of a subsidy, they're going to have to come through that kind of a process as well, and we'll see what's being proposed.
Okay, I think if there are no other questions, we will adjourn this public hearing and move on to the next item. Thank you, Mr. Blood. Ms. Selko, you're going to do marijuana?
Yes, Article 17.
Okay.
Medical marijuana, as you know, the state has legalized medical marijuana and is in the process of formulating regulations for it. Those regulations are supposed to be approved on May 1st, but it could be later than that. The planning department and the zoning bylaw committee felt that it was imprudent to have zoning bylaw regulations until we knew what the state regulations were, so that they wouldn't be conflictual. So to that end, we're suggesting a moratorium on medical marijuana that would temporarily prohibit the use, to provide the town the time to thoughtfully enact its own regulations. There is a sunset clause on that moratorium. It's through June 30th, 2014, and the idea is that by the spring 2014 town meeting, that at least by that town meeting, we would have passed, taken away the moratorium and passed regulations that would allow medical marijuana in locations that were felt to be the safest and the best locations.
Does this state statute actually allow us to use our zoning bylaw to limit the physical locations?
It does. And I would say, too, that some towns have already, in their zoning bylaw, prohibited the use, and the AG has said that that is not legal, because they have to allow it in certain places.
Okay, so we can restrict the locations, but we can't prohibit?
That's correct.
Questions for Ms. Selko? Dr. Balsam? This is a public hearing. This is a public hearing. Would you like to speak in favor or in opposition to this warrant article?
Alan Balsam, Public Health and Human Services. I support the moratorium, but I do want to say the, it's my view that DPH will codify their regulations on May 8th, according to the information I got today. I think that gives the town sufficient time to bring a warrant article to November town meeting, and I know Selectmen Banka has already been thinking about that. The reason I think we should move more quickly rather than delay is because in the absence of a medical marijuana dispensary, people who have permission to use the drug can grow their own, and I'm concerned about that. I think that where there is a dispensary, we have greater control. Where people are growing their own, we have less control. And so I'd like to, if we're going to have a dispensary, I think it should be sooner rather than later, and we already have floated some ideas on what restrictions we might consider in order to have a professional operation that's safe.
Questions for Dr. Balsam? I'm curious, since you said you have been told that the state will be issuing its regulations fairly soon, will, is it your, do you have any sense at all about what they will contain?
Yes, I think they'll be very similar to the draft regulations that came out a week ago Friday, which I've reviewed, and I think are amazingly thoughtful. You might know that Andy Epstein, Paul Epstein's wife, was the drafter of those regulations at DPH, and she was the woman who drafted the Suboxone regulations as well. So this is a woman who has quite a bit of experience, and they did a great job. They took the best of all of the regulations from around the country, and I'm not going to say that there'll be no changes, because there are hearings on Friday in three locations to take comments from the public and others, but I think we're pretty close to what those regs will be.
Great, good to know that.
I don't think any of those regulations, though, correct me if I'm wrong, actually speak to the location, other than talking about the distribution through the counties, which is something I think the town will look toward.
I'm going to ask something, sort of out of curiosity, and I think it's really directed to Dr. Balsam. Because of all of the publicity compounding pharmacies have received for their lack of oversight, who's going to oversee these places? For the things that the compounding pharmacies were not being overseen for?
And you don't, and you're not, we're not even mentioning the chemistry lab over at the state lab.
Exactly, well, I was trying to, I was trying to compare it fairly.
It's an issue. It's an issue. One thing that will be different in this case is that there will be a funding source for this. These facilities will be providing the money to regulate them, which was not the case with the compounding pharmacies. So when DPH has been cut year after year after year, that was one of the things that slipped. This will be a dedicated funding source to regulating these facilities. So that's, gives us a little bit of hope. The other thing is that there's no specific role for the local health. We were concerned, for example, that we would have to regulate the food that's sold there, and.
Are they going to sell food?
Possibly, yeah. And most dispensaries do.
I see, I see.
Probably Selectmen Banka's been thinking about that.
Yeah, they sell food. That's got.
Yeah, right, all right, I get it, I get it. I was thinking of it differently, but what you're saying is, there are different marijuana products, some of which will be marijuana combined with other foods?
Yes, correct. And so, you know, we were concerned, should, would we have a role in that, and what would that role be? Apparently, at least in the initial draft, there is the role for us in that.
So who's going to supervise sanitation? I'm serious about this. I do not think, I do not take this lightly at all.
Not at all, of course not, and you shouldn't. There will be inspectors from the State Health Department, who again, will be funded out of this designated funding stream in order to do the inspections. Again, unless it changes in the final draft. So that is the best practice, frankly, in those places where it's being done well. And what we want is consistency across all of the dispensaries. And so I think that's our best shot at it.
Okay, but basically, what you're saying to me is that this is going to be a state responsibility.
That's correct. As of right now, it's going to be a state responsibility.
Okay, all right.
And we'll be responsible for any zoning restrictions, to say where it's going to be. Or, for example, another idea that's been floated is whether the grow of the marijuana will be in an adjacent location to the dispensary, or will it be done in another location?
Like Florida.
I haven't heard that one yet.
I think it does allow the growing to be off-site.
It does, it does. It absolutely does.
And I suspect that, given the cost of land in Brookline, growing will be done off-site.
I hope so.
Well, the growing's usually indoors, actually.
Okay, are we ready to move on to the next?
Yeah, let me just.
I did that already, and the public spoke. Isn't Harry here for this one?
He's here for the next one, I think.
Are you just having a night out?
Just having a good time.
Okay.
The June 30th, 2014 date in here, which is the sunset provision for the moratorium, is a date that the Attorney General has approved in the case of at least one other community in Brookline, Burlington, I think. Put a moratorium in place until that date in order to get their zoning in place, and that date to pass muster with the Attorney General.
Okay. All right, how about then, Article 18, daycare?
The last zoning warrant article addresses childcare facilities. And I gather the childcare, there's a statute that basically treats them sort of like Dover Amendment? Yes, it's very similar. The language is very similar in Chapter 48, the Zoning Act. It's a separate paragraph, but the language is.
It's actually in the same section as the so-called Dover Amendment, dealing with educational and religious institutions.
And basically, what that does is it says you, the town may not prohibit the use. You can set other regulations, just like for nonprofit educational institutions, surrounding the dimensional requirements and the parking, et cetera. But the actual use can't be forbidden, and our zoning bylaw did forbid this in certain zones, like single-family zones. So now we're recommending that that be changed and the use be allowed in each zone, but there are several safeguards that are being proposed. In the section we, of the use table, we state that there has to be regulatory review of these facilities by the Director of Health, and also that the Director of Parks in open space will have a role, because as you know, there's been an issue in Brookline of overuse of certain parks, or crowding at certain times by the daycare facilities. So that is addressed in the amendment, and also in a couple of different sections. For instance, where we address parking, we suggest that the Director of Transportation Engineering should review the safety of the drop-off and pickup in regards to what the surrounding crosswalks are, what the traffic is nearby, and that kind of thing. Because that's a crucial issue when you're dropping children off for daycare, that they be able to walk into the facility in a safe manner, and that there be safe parking for the parents dropping the kids off. The other thing we thought that we would add is, there is a parking requirement for child daycare, which says, for any institution that has children under a certain age, obviously children who can't drive, that you need only provide one-third of the required parking. And it was suggested that we add a special permit in case even that is not appropriate. If, let's say, they're right next to a T-stop and didn't have parking, could they, they go in there? Well, it can be looked at case by case and decided, and so a special permit could be issued for that. Are there any questions on that?
This is a public hearing. Is there anybody here who wishes to speak either in favor or in opposition to this warrant article? Apparently not. I have, kind of a, maybe a Dr. Balsam question. I know that the Health Department has oversight for daycare facilities. Does this add responsibilities to your daycare inspectors at all?
No, it doesn't, and it simply codifies what they're already doing. I, I'm reluctantly going to kind of foreshadow something that may be in the works. There's a rumor abounding that the, as you know, Brookline is the only community in Massachusetts that plays this role, and we've been doing that on our, we've been the only one for the last four, four or five years. And there has been some pushback by the state regulatory agency, that why is Brookline the only one in the state that does this? And it, you know, it's an awkward situation, and it's finally looking like it may come to a head. So I just want to alert you, as long as we were discussing this, that this may be an issue coming up in the, possibly in the near future, where the state may be looking to take this responsibility back. However, if they do, this warrant article will protect the town, because it will leave a number of responsibilities in place that we will have to attend to, even if we don't have all of the responsibilities that we currently have.
And will the state actually send inspectors?
Yes, they will. Probably not as often as our inspectors go out, but they are obliged to send inspectors to do inspections and all of the things that we do. Of course, you know, I feel we were able to do it more thoroughly, but I also understand that one thing, having worked at the state government for seven years myself, the state government is not particularly good at dealing with anomalies. They like things to be orderly, and so the fact that Brookline does stick out like a sore thumb on this issue chafes some people downtown. So we'll see, we'll see where that goes, and I will update the board as the saga unfolds.
Okay.
That being said, I think that embodying some of these principles in the zoning bylaw actually becomes even more important.
That's exactly what my point was. It's even more, it's more important that we pass this.
Okay. Any other questions from members of the board? Then I believe we will take these up again in another week or two for votes, but no votes are contemplated tonight. And thank you very much for your help in educating us.
Thank you.
And finally, we have the possibility of appointing a trustee to the Walnut Hills Cemetery. We do have a candidate.
Yes, we have actually multiple vacancies in this, in this board that is creating problems with the operations of the cemetery, and so we'd like to, now that you've interviewed Mr. Leary, put his name forward for nomination, so I think that would be the vacancy that would expire in 2015 is the longest of those, I guess.
Yeah, I would certainly recommend that one.
So Richard Leary for a term expiring in 2015.
Aye.
Aye.